The Mayor and Common Council of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. They have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Been a motion by Mr. Cavaci and a second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. Minutes are approved. Before we go on with the regular agenda, let's take a few minutes out of order to hear from Mr. Andrew Vanderstijf, who is the Assistant Vice President for Facilities Management at McDaniel College. Mr. Vanderstijf is here to discuss the upcoming inauguration of President Julia Jansen. Jaskin, I believe. Please, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council President, Council members. Just wanted to again bring attention to inauguration of President Julia Jaskin, who's officially being installed as the president on August ninth. I mean, I'm sorry, April the ninth. On June first, Dr. Jaskin became the tenth president of McDaniel College and the second female president in the college's one hundred and fifty year history. As we approach the inauguration weekend, McDaniel College is hosting a lot of events that are open to the public. And we look for participation from the local community. On Thursday, April the seventh, there is a spoken word event in Alumni Hall, which begins at seven P M. Friday is on April the eighth, there is an inaugural academic symposium from nine A M. to four P M. Probably more exciting and open to the community on Friday night will be a movie night at McDaniel, followed by some fireworks on Friday night. That begins at six thirty P M., and that's at the Kenneth or Gill Stadium. The movie being shown is Zootopia, and that will be followed by the fireworks event. And also on Saturday, April the ninth, is the actual installation ceremony, which will be at the Gill Center at three thirty. So thank you very much for more and more detailed information. Please look at our website, which is mcDaniel.edu/inauguration. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Well, we're all looking forward to Dr. Jaskin's inauguration. I'm not attending, I'm sure many of my colleagues are. And we're very excited about her tenure as president. Thank you. Right, moving on, we have two items on the consent calendar this evening. I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Then a motion by Mr. Dehoff and a second by Mr. Hoff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. And the consent calendar is approved. Reports from the mayor, Dr. Becker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we'll have some pretty heavy committee reports. I'll keep mine short this evening. Just on March twenty-second, which was last week, we had, I held a small community meeting at forty-five West Main Street about the pool. It was a very small group, but Mrs. Gruber did a great job with the presentation. And we had a lively discussion about the pool and the construction thereof and what that will look like over the next year or two with the residents that showed up. It also generated, I posted some pictures on social media, which also generated a lot more interest, as well with some individuals asking some follow-up questions about the pool. I want to say also a thank you to Ms. Impulse. Again, Mrs. Gruber, myself, we have worked with McDaniel College to put together a solution for the stingrays this summer where they'll be able to practice at McDaniel College, since they won't have the city pool to practice at, and that contract is being finalized as we meet. I will say this evening, and hopefully that will be underway. That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Move on now to reports from standing committees. By the way, I'm sorry, I was meaning I was out of town.
Oh, I did make apologies for, yes, for those who were not there.
Thank you for doing that. I think these community meetings that you're holding on some of these issues that are out there, I think, are very helpful. And I think, from what I hear, people appreciate the fact that they get the chance to come to those.
The more information we can provide.
Absolutely. So good, good job on that.
Thank you.
Reports from standing committees will begin, as we always do, with our liaison to the Arts Council, Mr. Dehoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. The fifteenth annual Peep Show will take place from April the eighth through the eighth. It's going to be Monday through Saturday, ten A M. to six thirty P M. And Sunday, from twelve P M. to five thirty P M., the admission is free, and it just brings in thousands and thousands of people to the city of Westminster. Much more information on, programmatically, the Arts Council is doing a great job for us. Much more information on the Carroll County ArtsCouncil.org website. It's a very good website. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dehoff. Economic and Community Development, Mr. Hoff.
Mr. President, the only thing I have to announce is that this Wednesday, March the thirtieth, we have our meeting, a committee meeting at three thirty P M., which will be in person at forty-five West Main.
All right, thank you. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I'll report that budget work is well underway. The committee will be meeting to have a conversation with the city administrator to discuss Thursday, yes, Thursday, to discuss some of the broad outlines, you know, larger issues that are involved. And we'll give her a little more time to get some work done before we get down into the weeds at our subsequent meeting. She is still in the search for a finance director. I'll let her address that later. You know, we're plugging away and looking forward to starting to grapple with some of these issues. Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, Mr. Cavaci.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have a number of items. Western Police Department participated in a large-scale narcotics operation on Wednesday, March twenty-third, which included the services of the federal criminal, included service of federal criminal indictments, the service of fourteen residential search and seizure warrants, and the recovery of criminal evidence. This was a great collaboration between the Carroll County Drug and Firearms Trafficking Task Force, which is comprised of the Westminster Police Department, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office, and the Carroll County State Attorney's Office. Also involved in this, of course, is the Maryland State Police, the FBI, and the U.S. Attorney. You know, it was a huge deal. I mean, it's probably one of the biggest police operations that has taken place here in the city in my tenure on council, which is pretty lengthy. And it's my tenure as the Chair of Public Safety, and I'm really proud of the work that the chief did to push this through. There has been a lot going on for many months, if not years. We don't really know because we're not privy to all the behind-the-scenes information. A lot of it's secret and classified. But all along, as things seemed to be heating up, the chief kept assuring us that things were happening and they were working on it. And boom, three hundred, I think it was three hundred police officers were involved in this, if I'm not mistaken, chief. So there were three hundred police officers involved in this operation, and it was a big deal. They made some good quality arrests with lots of good evidence. And I think we're going to see some dealers do some significant time, hopefully. Now, we just need the judicial side of the organization to do its part, which, of course, we have no control over. But I think Westminster Police Department should be commended for the role they played in this, which is a significant role. And I hope that it sends the right message to folks, not from this area, that this isn't an area to come, ply your trade, go somewhere else, because we take it serious and we don't look the other way. And I'm proud of the work that you and your staff did, chief. I know I speak for everybody up here, thank you very much. Couple of other things, Mr. President. Detectives continue to follow investigatory leads on the Family Fitness Center burglary and the related malicious destruction of property crimes. I know they're working on that. The chief had the opportunity to promote two officers, Touska and Rojas, to PFC after they finished their first year probationary period, so great work. The department hosted three police captains from other Maryland municipal police departments who filled roles as assessors and scenario-based oral board promotion process exercise for several of our sergeants and lieutenants who are competing for the, in this promotion process. It's one step in the process, and it's nice that the chief and his staff have the ability to bring these folks in from the outside and get them to help with that. And then lastly, Chief Ledwell participated alongside Sheriff Dewise in the Annapolis Police Plunge down at the Special Olympics. And so Sheriff Dewise actually did get in the water this time? Okay, good, 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 good. Not like the dump booth, right? Well, that's great. Well, good. So that's my report, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavaci. And go ahead and do the Public Works Committee as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. Paving is complete on Hobbits and South Hills, West Main Street extended and Cemetery Road. And they'll start Monday on Longwell Surface Lot in front of City Hall and the Key Lot behind City Hall, weather-dependent. I'm assuming the weather did not allow for that to start.
No, it's, oh, it's a tighty-happening.
You know what? I haven't been down there. I drove straight in from the back. Okay, good. ADA sidewalk work is complete for the year. Center Street storm drain outfall repair is scheduled to start mid-April. Material availability is controlling construction start, like it's controlling so much and many things, including my business. City Hall roof slate is complete. Standing seam sections to be completed next week, and material delivery is controlling completion of that as well. I and I preliminary work cleaning and televising is complete. The lining and repair material has been ordered. And a water shutdown for Union Town Road and Paris Ridge Avenue to be, to the valve, for a valve bolt replacement project went smoothly, which is great. And there were no citizens' complaints, which, I think, giving them heads up and all that certainly plays a role in that. So nice work, Mr. Glass. Please thank your staff for that. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Cavaci. Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dehoff.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the Director of Recreation and Parks for the community planning meeting for the pool. It was done extremely well, and I'm really tickled with the out-of-the-box creative approach to the swim team, because I had received quite a number of inquiries about the fate of the pool from the swim team. And, Mr. President, I'd like to yield the rest of my time to the co-chair of the Recreation and Parks Committee, Councilwoman Gilbert, because I was not able to make it to the March sixteenth Recreation and Parks Council Committee meeting. Take it away, Ms. Gilbert.
We had a meeting March sixteenth. There was a discussion on future parks in the city, along with facility capital projects. The Durbin House project was discussed. Concrete is currently, well, I don't know about currently because it's a little chilly, but currently being poured in a house phase, and the project continues to move forward, allowing the structure to continue to be remodeled, along with allowing its historical aspects to remain intact. So we are looking forward to seeing that continue. The Streets Department is also working on cleaning up around the facility. The Westminster Pool is, as the mayor talked to us earlier, continuing with its design meetings every two weeks. Our director is meeting with the Design Committee, and it is in full progress as a great new project. We also had a community pool meeting, which we also discussed last week. It was well done by Ms. Gruber, and I think everyone was happy that the stingrays have now found a temporary home over the summer. It was a win-win partnership for both the city and McDaniel College. I know a lot of people are looking forward to two thousand and twenty-three with the opening of the new pool, but also two thousand and twenty-four, as that year will showcase the new addition of the new aquatic area and the lap pool. So we're going to have two nice years of new projects in the swimming pool arena. The Fitness Center locker project is moving forward, and we are waiting for the lockers to come in and be installed. Ms. Gruber, anything else for you to add, or would you like to wait till later?
I'll add it during my record.
Okay, cool.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And I have nothing from the Technology Committee tonight. Now it's time for council comments and discussion when council members get the opportunity to show anything that's on their minds that is not a committee report or elsewhere on the agenda. Before we do that, I would just want to mention that in the excitement over hearing about Dr. Jaskin's inauguration, I neglected to mention that we are pleased to have with us a former mayor, Joe Dominic. Mr. Mayor, nice to see you tonight. Thanks for coming out. All right, so now we'll begin with citizen comments, Mr. Hoff.
No.
You take a week off.
Sorry, Mr. Hoff.
I will give you a quick update regarding the Highway User Revenue Bill. It did pass the House. It is now over on the Senate side, but has not gotten out of committee yet, which is not necessarily a bad thing. The hearing is actually tomorrow, so I will continue to keep you all posted on that. The third reading in the House passed one thirty-eight, two zero, so I would say that's a positive sign. So we'll continue to keep an eye on that and keep our fingers crossed. And then I just wanted to kind of follow up regarding the public safety report. You know, I was incredibly impressed with all the collaboration that took place behind the scenes. And obviously, you know, we're limited in what we do know, but we do, we do have a sense that things are being done and taken care of. And at times, I know since citizens have expressed frustration to me personally, and I have assured them, you know, while we can't always share, and what we do know is very limited anyway, but I have assured everybody who's talked to me that we are very concerned about these kind of activities in our city and that it is very important to us. And I think what just took place last week demonstrates how important that is to us as electors and also for the Police Department. So I'm kind of glad that it's finally come about, that it becomes more obvious to the community that we take these kind of matters seriously, and that we will definitely continue to keep these kind of things very seriously. So that's my only follow-up comment regarding that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Mr. Cavaci.
Mr. President, just quickly thank the mayor for doing a good job communicating with the community. You know, you've had a couple of these meetings here recently, one related to the Green Street deal and this one with the pool. So I think that's important, and, you know, it reflects well on all of us, so greatly appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Ms. Gilbert.
I have a couple things. As the council liaison with the Magic Board, I wanted to update the council and the community with a few things. M.Dod is considering holding their semi-annual meeting for the Connected and Autonomous Vehicle Working Group. It looks like it will be potential three hundred members coming to Westminster, so that's going to be great for our local businesses. And that'll probably be in August or September, if that continues to move forward. It's been aligned with the tentative second annual Westminster Autonomous Vehicle Showcase. The M.Dod staff will also be visiting Westminster May sixteenth from ten to one for a tour of various facilities in Westminster that will be capable of hosting their meeting, including the large meeting room at the Exploration Commons. The esports arena master design has been completed. Mr. Dodge is beginning outreach work on the development plan, and it appears that the Ravens will be interested. Maybe, we'll see. More to come on that topic, I'm sure. And as many people have seen, the office for Magic is now fully furnished, equipped, and being used as a front on our main street. And I think all of us agree, we're kind of happy to see them with a storefront accessible to folks, and their presence adds to the block. So that's a good plus for all of us. And in addition, there was a MML meeting on March seventeenth in Manchester. I, along with Councilman Dehoff and City Administrator Ms. Impulse, attended. It was pretty much a normal MML meeting. There was one thing that came out of the meeting, though, and it had to do with regarding the County Police Accountability Board. There was a little bit of discussion on that, and I'm sure there's going to be more discussion to follow. But a few municipalities wanted to make their thoughts known that night. So there was, I don't know, probably ten, fifteen-minute discussion on that topic. See how that plays out in the future.
But thank you, Mr. President. Can I ask a question? What was there, were they pro or con?
I think what most people wanted to make sure, we were all, that there's representation from the cities on the board.
I suppose it just means, that makes sense.
That's more the importance of what the discussion was.
Thank you, thank you for indulging me, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Dehoff.
Ms. Gilbert, did you want to mention Veterans Independence?
Um, you can go ahead. I'm done. It's all yours.
Tomorrow is National Vietnam War Veterans Day, and it's a day in which we set aside to pay our respects to my friends and colleagues who didn't come back. And out of respect for that, Veterans Independence Project is going to have a program tomorrow morning at eleven o'clock. Eleven o'clock. And is it going to be over at?
It will be at the Carroll Street location.
Okay.
And most of it, the plan, depending on how many people, is that it'll be inside because it's supposed to be extremely cold. But there also might be too many people to have it inside, so parts of it might be outside.
Okay, well, we'll play it by ear.
That will be played by ear tomorrow morning.
I guess I wanted to get on the record, and I hope I'm not stealing Merrick Dominic's under. I wanted to ask about the status of annexing the Ellsworth Cemetery. I think that's a really important project and something that we really need to get accomplished. So I wanted to get that on the record, to ask about the status of that. Councilwoman and Gilbert and I and my wife attended the annual Shepherd Staff Empty Bowls event at Portico yesterday. Our sense of community coming together to help combat hunger is really important, and I know it's near and dear to many of my colleagues' hearts. And it was an extremely good event. It was really nice to see the community come out. And then I'm sad to announce that a prominent Maryland attorney, Tom Meacham, has passed away. Over his lifetime, he was a community servant and served on the Board of Directors of many nonprofits, including recently the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster. Tom was a very prominent attorney. At his funeral, it was like a who's who from all across Maryland attended the funeral. I worked with Mr. Meacham on a number of things, and I had the honor of working with his dad, Roy Meacham, who introduced me to ghostwriting, ghostwriting speeches and ghostwriting presentations. He was a ghostwriter for LBJ's wife, Tom Meacham's dad, lived in Carroll County. Thank you, Mr. President. That's my report.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention one thing. We had some conversation some weeks ago, informally, in our regular meeting, about our friends in Pieta Estonia. We have a sister-city relationship with Pieta Estonia, and it's been a few years since we've seen those folks. I think four years ago in twenty eighteen, the previous mayor there and, you know, a couple of the other city officials visited Westminster. I know there were some plans to visit in twenty twenty, a little cultural exchange, but pandemic, you know, made that difficult to do and impossible to do. The mayor and I talked about it subsequently, and we decided to reach out just to say that we wanted to check in on them. You know, with all the turmoil in that part of the world, and in the spirit of the sister-city's relationship, which was created in the aftermath of a fall of the Soviet Union to develop democratic ties between, you know, places in America and, you know, communities in former Soviet Union republics. So we established a relationship with Pieta, so reached out to them, received a nice letter back from them to the mayor and myself, greetings from the heart of Estonia from Pieta. Yes, it's been for a while that we had contacts between our cities. Covid came, and our planned activities had to be postponed. We look forward to continuing and strengthening the successful cooperation and the friendly relations between our municipalities. We have only the warmest words to say about Thomas Bayard. He has been a very loyal friend, and we hope we find more close contacts with you from our sister-city. Times are tough in Europe, and friendship is always what supports and helps in difficult times. Hope to have close contacts with you soon. And it was signed by the mayor, Saret Pilagas, the mayor of Pieta. So we will continue to follow up, and, you know, I understand that they would like to do another visit, and they would like to invite some of us to come and visit them. So we'll see what the future holds on that and, you know, what additional cultural exchanges are possible going forward. And that's all I have. Thank you. Unfinished business, there is no unfinished business of which I'm aware. Does anybody have any unfinished business? Hearing none, I'll move on to new business. One item of new business, approval of change order number one for the Westminster W W T P E N R and Biosolids Upgrade Project. Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir. The construction management contract for the E N R upgrade includes a cash allowance to cover costs for material testing, special inspections, and inspection overtime. The initial allowance was four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, of which MBE participates proportionally for the state's agreed upon share. That's fifty-six, a little more than fifty-six percent. But early on, I'm sure you'll recall, during construction of the deoxification facility, an unstable subgrade was encountered due to sinkholes in that building's footprint. There was considerable drilling and grouting and geotechnical work, along with extensive materials testing, all was necessary for the stabilization of the subgrade of this building's foundation. And unfortunately, that exhausted all of those allowance spots. And we do have one remaining excavation for the installation of reactor number five, which preliminary subsurface testing has indicated a similar unsuitable subgrade condition. Of course, we won't know that until we get there, but all indications are that it will be very similar. Additional material testing and geotechnical work will be required for this reactor, and of course necessitates the replenishment of this cash allowance to some degree. In addition, there is an overtime inspection services included in the cash allowance as well. And over the course of the project, the contractor, H R I, has requested to work beyond forty hours per week, resulting in overtime costs for the GHD inspectors. H R I reimburses the city for those inspection costs and has done so throughout a number of monthly pay applications in the form of change order D docs. Accordingly, it's anticipated that additional inspector overtime will be requested due to H R I's current completion schedule. So the GHD, our construction management team, estimates the remaining testing services to be in the hundred and ten thousand dollar range, based on the trends of previous testing. Technical investigations for reactor five is estimated to be in the seventy-five thousand dollar range, and the inspection overtime is estimated to be in the twenty thousand dollar range for a total budget replenishment cost of two hundred and five thousand dollars. It should be understood that this amount is for budget purposes, and only actual costs will be deducted as they are incurred. And it should also be understood that the actual expenditure will be cost shared with MBE as well, as per existing in our agreement. So at this point, staff recommends that the Common Council authorize the mayor to approve change order number one for replenishment of cash allowance portion in our contract for material testing, special inspections, and overtime services in the amount of up to two hundred and five thousand dollars to the city's construction management contract with GHD. I'd be answer any questions if you had any.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glass. Are there any questions for Mr. Glass? Actually, before we do that, let's get a motion.
Make a motion.
Thank you. So a motion to approve change order number one by Mr. Dehoff. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Gilbert. Somebody have a question?
President, I do.
Mr. Cavaci.
So, Mr. Glass, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. Fifty-six percent of this two oh five, if it's used, we will get that back from the state, that's for sure.
That's correct.
And they don't have to go through any type of approval process on their end like this. It's a lock. They don't have to go through any type of approval process on their end like this? It's a lock?
So it's consistent with the agreement that we'll have to go through an approval process, but that's every change order that'll go through the approval process. So I hate to say 100% sure, but I'm 99.45% that it's.
And so I don't know if this is maybe more Ms. M Holst to you since she's our acting finance director at this moment, sort of. It's just going to come out of what sewer funds or operating budget or?
Mr. Glass can answer.
Again, okay.
It must be sewer funds.
Okay, so it's only sewer funds it's come out of?
That's correct.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kabachi. I was going to ask on those lines. So appreciate you doing that. Anybody else have any questions or any comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Didn't we do a change order when we found the substandard soils under the deodorification plan?
So that was with H R I, the contractor themselves?
Yeah, okay.
But this is for the material testing that?
Oh, this is for the testing.
And for the construction management firm to?
If we don't find substandard soils under that, I'm going to be really surprised. Yeah, I'm going to be really surprised. Okay. I get it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Anyone else? All right. Hearing no further discussion, I take it you're ready for the vote. All those in favor of approving change order number one, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it and the change order is approved. Thank you, Mr. Glass. Now we'll move on to departmental reports. And that will turn to our City Administrator Ms. Impulse.
Is there a report from the fire department?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
In the newsletter that goes out in the water bills, we have been advertising folks to submit their resumes online if they're interested in participating in the various boards and commissions that we have. So we're going to start tonight with the planning department to get an update for a couple of those boards and commissions.
Okay. On Tuesday, April 5th, the Portisonal Appeals is scheduled to hear case 21221, a special exception application to operate a contractor's equipment and storage yard appropriately located at Magna Way. Case 223, a special exception application to operate a home occupation massage therapist use at 329 Meadow Creek Drive. And case 224, a minimum front yard setback variance from requirements of 30 feet in order to allow the existing house redevelopment of the front porch to be four feet, two inches from the property line at 29 West Washington Road. I think we're all familiar with that property. It's pretty dilapidated. Somebody did purchase it and is improving it. So this would make it a legal structure versus a non-conforming or a non-compliant structure. On Wednesday, April 6th, the Historic District Commission is scheduled to discuss contents of a historic structures report, Flower and Jazz Festival Participation and National History Day. And as always, the Winter's Farming Market is open on Saturdays. We did extend it one more week to April 16th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM and is located at 29 West Main Street. And that completes my report.
Are there any questions from Mr. Depot? Hearing none, we are going to move on to the Recreation Department to get an update on the Durbin House and some upcoming events.
Yes, good evening. On Thursday of last week, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting for exterior renovations to the Durbin House. If you remember, this is an MHA grant funded project. It will allow us to seal the building envelope, do some moisture mitigation. As Councilwoman Gilbert indicated, we're doing some work in the crawl space, excavating some dirt out there, creating a little more hospitable, repairing some termite damage that has happened over many, many years and just making the structure sound. So we did have a brisk turnout for that pre-bid meeting with about 12 interested contractors. And we did conclude with a site visit to the Durbin House that they could actually see the structure. We have been receiving questions back as well on the request for bids. So we do anticipate that we'll have a competitive bid response for that project. And we're excited to be getting that underway as quickly as possible. So in addition to that, the phase two of the locker room renovation project is underway. This is the countertop replacement, new sink basins, restroom partitions and back ordered lockers. So the countertops are complete and the restroom partitions have been installed. We're working through some punch list items with that particular project. And we are still awaiting the lockers arrival, which looks like it won't be until January or July. January, that would be a nightmare. July. So and then with that, your Recreation and Parks Department has been busy stuffing over 20,000 plastic Easter eggs for our, for our exciting bunny trail and Easter event scheduled for next Saturday from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Wakefield Valley Golf Course. Children will be able to engage in a traditional egg hunt, kids one to four at 10:30, kids five to eight at 11:30. They will also have the opportunity to embark on a carefully crafted spring themed trail where as they go along and participate in different activities, they'll win prizes, which at the end will build a cute little bunny garden. And then we'll also have another trail, which will be an Easter trivia trail that they can participate in. And the 4H Rabbit and Kevy Club will be there with their bunny petting zoo. So we're looking forward to hopefully great weather and a fun filled family day. Our posting on Facebook seems to be getting a lot of attention over, 13,000 people have seen it and 700 people have indicated that they're interested in attending. And we have found that those numbers are pretty true to what actually shows up to these events. So we're looking forward to putting that out there next Saturday. And everybody cross your fingers for a break in the weather for our second event for the season. That concludes my report unless there are questions.
Ms. Gilbert, when you say next Saturday, is it this coming Saturday or the Saturday after that?
Saturday after that.
Okay. Because I think you'd be disappointed if you're going to do this.
Yes, I think it's April 9th is the date. I should have just used that. Yes, April 9th.
Are there any questions for the Recreation Department? We're going to scoot on over to Zoom where we've got the Housing Director up. Mr. Brown, do you have any reports for the council today?
I have no reports.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Ms. McCullough with HR, she should be on Zoom.
No report this evening for the HR Department.
Are there any questions from council for HR? Okay, we are going to move over. I want to take a moment to thank the Police Department. They are always working to keep the city safe. But last week, we were able to see some of those efforts, visually see some of those efforts. I want to take a moment to thank the whole department for all of their efforts last week and ongoing. And let the chief give us an update on public safety.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to pick up where Councilman Kabachi left off. The sheriff and I went down to the Special Olympics Police Polar Plunge, which is the day before the general one. And we traveled down with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office Police Academy class in which we have two police recruits. So I'm excited to say that they will graduate this Friday. They started in early September. I know they're eager to get out and start field training and then get out on their own. So that'll be Police Recruit Ray and Hall. So they're getting sworn in Friday. We also have a certified Maryland Police Officer, William Rojas, who starts with us also this week. And he brings multiple years of municipal police experience and he is also bilingual. We're looking forward to getting Officer Rojas on the road. And on April 4th, Officer Lucas Eli returns from his National Guard, which was a COVID related local operational deployment. So he'll return to us and get back out on the street on April 4th. And that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Are there any questions for the chief? Hearing none, we're going to move over to the Public Works Department. They have been very busy this spring. So, Mr. Glass, can you give us an update?
Nothing to include more than Councilman Kabachi had already spoken today. So, unless there are questions.
We need to pre-treat the roads.
Will you knock it off?
I'm done. I'm done with it.
What he said.
Yeah. He told me to knock it off.
Sorry, not a mayor.
We are about to begin engineering on the clock tower so that we'll be able to utilize states fund when they become available at the beginning of the fiscal year. So I want to thank the Public Works Department for their efforts in getting and in getting that together. Councilmember Hoff, did you have a question?
No, no, no. That was just my fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
Money to come all the way through.
If and when, correct. Yes. And we also want to thank to help get that contract together, our city attorney who has brought with her a guest. This is Karen Ruff. Do you like to take over here? Karen and I worked together as well a long time ago, right?
Yeah, so I had mentioned to all of you that on Monday, Karen and I will be opening our doors on our new firm.
Awesome.
Our address will be in Annapolis, although either one of us will actually be in that office. But certainly if you'd like to see it, we have access. As you know, I practiced with Karen for a long, long time. Was practicing with her when we first came to you all. And I am really, really thrilled to be able to resume that relationship.
Mr. President, if you would indulge me for a minute, I just wanted to reference the fact that when I was back on BZA in the day, that Ms. Ruff was our BZA attorney. And she had the pleasure, as I did, of serving in an infamous case regarding a church that went on, I think, three different nights, if I remember Karen. So she's very good to work with.
Thank you. So yes, we've worked with Ms. Ruff for many years now. Back in the early days when Karen was appointed to City Attorney and it's great to see you again. And looking forward to your new partnership. Good.
I just wanted to say finally that again, I want to thank the mayor and council for having me on board. I've been here now for six months. It has been a really incredible six months. I'm incredibly proud to be serving this community. And I can't help but notice how many strong women we have working in this government. It is a bit of an unknown. In my field, only 13% of the city managers in this country are women. That number has remained unchanged since 1980 when they started measuring it. But in this city, there's 100% history of hiring female managers. We currently have a female mayor and as you see, we have our entire attorney staff is made up of women as well. We appreciate all of the efforts of the men in our groups as well. That concludes the departmental reports.
Thank you, Ms. M Holstberg. Truly blessed that we're, appreciate the fact that all the women put up with the men that are here.
Carry us, she said.
Said, put up.
Carry the men.
Carry us too, very frequently. The final item on our agenda tonight is citizens' comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues pertaining to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. Let me remind everyone that this is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts and concerns, not exchange in a debate or answer questions. For citizens not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments or concerns via email at comments@westminstermarylandmd.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Commenters who write to us should include their address and phone number with their comments. Now, is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to be heard? Please give us your name and address for the record. So. Ms. Pam.
I'm Christy Newman. I live on Bluefall Court. I back up to the Wakefield Valley property. And recently, my children wanted to get chickens and we found out that inside the city limits, you're not allowed to have chickens. And we have a half acre property. We have tons of wildlife coming in our yard all the time. So it just seems illogical to me that we can't have a few little backyard chickens when you've got geese and blue herons and ducks and all sorts of things, you know. And a big enough yard. And we've done it before in other places that we've lived. We're government employees, so we've moved around quite a bit. And like, I was shocked when I saw, and I'm wondering if maybe that policy was written when the city was just like row homes in town or something. And now it's including these neighborhoods with bigger properties that have more of a rural feel. So I've given you a letter and some information, but I mean, even when we live in England, the schoolyard, how to garden and the chicken, chickens. And it's just like good practices in my opinion, you know, to have your kids raise chickens and have some eggs and have a garden and, you know, learn how to do things for yourself, especially in the state the world's in today and, you know, issues come up and it's nice to, you know, we can't get everything on our own, but to do what we can to have fruit trees and, you know, various things. And so I was hoping that we can change that policy because all the surrounding counties and cities and stuff allow it, even Baltimore City allows it. Of course, you can have rules about how many feet from a house or neighboring property or, you know, or such. But I think it hasn't been particularly addressed by Carroll County. But we're a farming community and I know like when I brought it up on the community Facebook page, you know, most people were like, yeah, yeah, yeah. Or some people were like, shh, just don't say anything and you can just have chickens. And I'd rather do things properly, you know, than have my kids get really invested. And then, you know, someone says something and then you end up in all this, you know, trouble. So that's my.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Take that as advisement. And thank you for the letter. Anyone else here who wished to be heard tonight? All right. In that case, then that concludes our agenda and the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be on April.
April 11th.
April 11th. Next meeting will be April, Monday, April 11th. And with that, without objection, we adjourn. Thank you.
Police Academy is going to close down.